I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics Candidate Interviews with Lorna Ford and Will Roberts from Montgomery County Council District Two, and Al Carr for Council District Four. I'm Sunil Das Gupta, host of I Hate Politics. If you are new to the show, I Hate Politics is a podcast about our neighborhoods, workplaces, schools and streets, and our local governments as they function in diverse, democratic, and sometimes divided societies. As part of the show, we have conversations with local, state, and sometimes federal candidates. Rather than ask them how they stand on a multitude of issues, these conversations try to get to the character of the candidate. For those who don't know, Montgomery County Council District Two is the western Up County district, starting from the county line with Frederick County, and going south to include Clarksburg, Germantown, Boyd's, and Poolsville. This is a new district created from the redistricting process the county went through after the 2020 census. Up County has long claimed to be neglected by local political leaders, the most powerful of whom come from southern Montgomery County in a crescent from Tacoma Park to Bethesda to Rockville. There may be other candidates running in District Two, but I spoke with community activist Lorna Ford and former Jamie Raskin staffer Will Roberts. This episode was going to be exclusively with Ford and Roberts, and about District Two, until Al Carr, the former Maryland State House delegate, and now candidate for Council District Four, decided belatedly to join the show. Keep in mind that the other leading candidate for District Two, Marilyn Balcomb, appeared in an I Hate Politics candidate interview in January 2022. Other candidates for Council District Four, including Tacoma Park Mayor Kate Stewart, nonprofit executive Amy Ginsberg, and bartender John Zitrower, appeared just last month in May. I will add the links to those episodes in the podcast social media posts. Having three long form interviews makes for a long episode. The advantage is you get a head to head comparison. But if you want to skip around, look in the show notes for the timestamps for each candidate. The interviews appear as I recorded them. Don't forget to listen to the previously released episodes featuring the other District Two and District Four candidates. Music for this episode comes from Emily Hall, a DC singer songwriter who grew up in Wheaton. You can find her on Instagram @songsbyemilyhall. Lorna Ford, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
You wanted to talk about crime and public safety? So can you describe what you see as the crime problem in Montgomery County today?
There are a number of issues that concern me regarding crime in Montgomery County, particularly in District Two. There have been 14 homicides in the county so far in 2022, and there were 35 in all of last year, which, by the way, was up from just 19 in 2020. So the trajectory is alarming. We're seeing almost at least once a month, examples, not examples, but instances of violent behavior that's resulting in death in our community. That is what alarms me more than anything else is the trend of these violent crimes in a community that didn't have this type of crime.
Is it the case that the COVID years are an aberration rather than a continuation of the trend line?
Based on what I've seen, like I said, particularly in District Two, the pre-COVID numbers were much lower, especially when it comes to violent crimes. I do believe that the pandemic unleashed some type of sleeping bear in this community, and right now it's running rampant.
What do you mean by sleeping bear?
Well, you know, I think people who are going to get involved in any type of nefarious type situations, you know, I think they think about it, and then they might talk themselves out of it. And because of the pandemic, when folks were forced to be still and, you know, no one was paying attention to some of the things that they might normally pay attention to. I mean, the whole scenario, there was so much uncertainty, so much drastic change and concern in the community. I think it gave those people who might have been thinking about these types of activities before an opportunity to take action on some of that. And like I said, it's just exploded. It's exploded. You see instances of youth killing each other, stabbings, killings. Just a week ago, there was a double homicide, 16-year-old and a grown man, you know, shooting at each other, killing each other. I mean, it's just, it's, I don't know, it's almost like we've taken, we've peeled back the layer a little bit of our own psyche for some individuals, and they've decided that they're just going to go live their lives. And if that includes some element of crime, they felt like, you know, they had an opportunity to do that with the pandemic, and it just has not abated.
What is the particular opportunity that pandemic did that allows these things to happen, in your view? Because, you know, I ask because you're running to change this, I assume. And you have to understand, in order to fix the problem, you have to understand cause. So what is that opportunity that the pandemic opened up for you?
Can't paint a broad brush here for everyone, but there are some that if they are not engaged, then they make poor choices.
The opportunity for mischief that the pandemic has presented, in your view, has it resulted in violence against people that the perpetrator knows or against strangers? Because I think there are different solutions to those problems.
Right, and I really don't know ultimately what causes someone to go and stab someone brutally, or causes someone to go shoot someone, or take a ghost gun to school, or go shoot a former girlfriend right in her own street. I cannot say that the pandemic caused this type of behavior. But I do believe in many instances that there are some who got engaged in certain types of activities because they weren't engaged in other types of activities that would have had them focus on totally different types of things.
Do you think that's a theoretical proposition? Or do you think that is actually what happens?
We could be here all day trying to figure out why Johnny did this and Sally did that. I mean, at the end of the day, they committed a crime. And that's really what we need to address. We need to address what are the mechanisms to minimize this type of activity in our communities? And I think when we focus on that, whether they be activities that are driven by the police department or by the community, the nonprofit community, the school community. If we take a moment and look at how we can address some of the factors that cause our children to make poor decisions or to cause young adults or grown people to make poor decisions and enter a path of crime, then we can start to peel back the layers and work on addressing those so that they don't have that as an impetus for becoming engaged in something that could totally ruin their life.
You know, you've said that you have watched your community for a long time. We've had crime drop over a fantastically long period of time between 1990 and I think 2018, thereabouts, or maybe even a little bit earlier, maybe 2016. Do you think those are the addressing drug treatment and mental health, housing affordability and education brought the crime rate down in those years?
I think anytime you start to expand your community to the extent that Up County has grown and developed in that same timeframe that you reference, it's going to bring with it some additional issues. So it could be a function of the fact that we didn't have as many people. We weren't as densely populated. Our schools weren't overcrowded. The schools were zoned in different ways. Our population was not as diverse. Not that diversity breeds crime. I'm just saying that there are different complexities when you start changing the overall complexion of your community. And as a result, it could result in an increase in crime. You cannot ignore the relationship.
Do you see more crime in Clarksburg than in, you know, southern Germantown, which I think has seen this problem more?
No, I don't. Not to say that they don't have their incidents of vandalism and maybe some burglaries. You may find incidents of that in Clarksburg. But when you're talking about the violent crime, I don't see evidence of that in Clarksburg. Now, I am concerned about something I saw in Clarksburg. Recently, I was at the Harris Teeter, and there were stickers on the light posts in that Harris Teeter parking lot that suggested that they were from extremist groups. So that concerned me. I don't know for sure if, I don't know for sure what that's all about. All I know is what I saw.
What did you see?
I just saw the stickers on the light posts in an area that you would not expect to see such extremist type of propaganda.
So was it white supremacy? Was it anti-Semitism? What did you see?
It was Alex Jones and Infowars, you know, very extreme views, both of which have very extreme views. And it just seemed out of place in Clarksburg. So did this happen, you know, right before the January 6th incident? And, you know, folks were passing through? I don't know. I just, you know, you need to be observant, and I think that's another thing that needs to happen in our communities. We have many, many Neighborhood Watch groups, and I think we're just going to have to be a little bit more vigilant with our Neighborhood Watch to try to help our police force to identify any types of anomalies we might see in our neighborhood.
How do you even do that? I don't quite understand how a Neighborhood Watch group can, you know, get into this, except of course, finding it later on and removing these things. I mean, so I can see a remedy that way, but I don't see how they can act preventively.
Well, I think the Neighborhood Watch, if everyone in the neighborhood is paying attention to everything that's going on around them, then they can serve as a beacon of information. They can serve as, you know, they can sound the alarm when something doesn't look right or something doesn't. And please, you know, you could take my statement and then create an extremist situation out of it. But I'm talking about those who genuinely care about being fair and equitable and how they live and how they interact in their communities.
Okay, so as county council member, should you win, what can you do or what proposals would you have to improve Neighborhood Watch as a public safety instrument?
I think community education, no matter what the topic or the issue, is important. And I think if there is an intentional effort to bring on the Community Watch groups as part of the community policing types of groups that are being considered and being created. For example, the Police Accountability Board, they're asking for, they're looking for individuals to serve on that board, and that comes out of the Police Accountability Act that the state passed last year. And if more Neighborhood Watch groups were aware that there's a call for residents to participate or to volunteer, and some of them are paid slots, but to get engaged with this type of group, which is an oversight group for the police department to ensure that there's fair and reasonable use of police force and police engagement. If we got more of the community neighborhood groups involved with that type of community engagement, then information would transfer from the police accountability, from the community engagement, and then you push it out. It just, you start that, once you start that information flow, it just gets pushed out across the neighborhood. And what that does essentially, what it can do essentially, is just minimize the issues that some members of the community might have about the police force and how they're engaging or not, and what type of force they're using, and what type of biases they're using when they apprehend someone or when they stop someone, you know, it'll just take away. But the more you understand and the more you know about how things are supposed to work and about the mechanisms that are in place to ensure fairness and equity, then the more you will be willing to share that information in your community. And I think that's what's going to happen. The police department can't do it alone. The county council can't do it alone. We can legislate, legislate, and come up with all kinds of policy. But if we cannot get the community engaged, then we will never, we will never be as successful as we could have otherwise been.
Do you think the Montgomery County Police Department is ready to engage in that way on their part?
I think they are ready to, and I think, again, this is going to be a, it's going to be a true transition. I think that there may be some in the police department who are not ready to engage in that way. And that may be the reason why they're having such a hard time with their staffing goals for the police department and their retention metrics in the police department. But I do think overall, the sentiment is that we can do better, and we need to show the community that we are here to protect them and to ensure their safety.
Do you have any specific ideas about how the police department can address the officer shortage problem?
Well, one way they can address it is to ensure that the officers can live, can afford to live where they work.
How do you get housing affordability for police officers, firefighters and teachers? How do you do that?
You have to look at other ways of getting access to housing. You have to look at different mixes of housing, perhaps. You have to look at, can we repurpose old buildings, old and vacant office buildings into condo units? Can we do something about increasing our residential density in the number of income restricted affordable housing units we have? And I know sometimes those in single-family homes were like, oh, no, not that. But, you know, we've got to find a way to live together so that everyone can afford to be in this community. We can look at possibly even purchasing. The county could designate and allocate some funds to purchase as much of the private housing stock as we can out of the hands of for-profit owners, and then turn it over to nonprofit owners and public owners just to make those spaces available and affordable.
Lorna Ford, thank you for coming on I Hate Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
That was Lorna Ford for Montgomery County Council District Two. You can find out more about her at lornafordthenumberfourcountycouncil.com. And you can follow her on Twitter at fordthenumberfourmoco. Keep in mind, Lorna Ford spells her last name as F-O-R-D-E, with an E at the end. Next up, former Jamie Raskin staffer Will Roberts. Will Roberts, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thanks for having me.
You said you wanted to talk about a new paradigm of economic development. Can you explain what that means?
So sure, you know, I think that one of the key things in this race and in all the races this cycle, and indeed, one of the key things that the county needs to be looking at as we go forward, is how we expand opportunity to every corner of Montgomery County, right? And to me, I hear a lot of candidates talking about economic development as a key factor. I'm one of those candidates. But I think about economic development beyond just the investments that we need to make in order to attract and grow businesses. That's a key component, right? Indeed, a core of that. But I also look at economic development as how we're investing in education, how we're investing in our transportation systems and housing, and affordable housing, and in people themselves, like how we're investing in our communities in order to help them succeed. And I think that's got to be part of, like, a more holistic economic development model as we figure out how to move the county forward. My focus is making sure that we're rightsizing all of those, the focus on all of those issues and focusing on those communities that tend to get left out of the conversation.
Okay, what does this rightsizing look like to you?
For the Up County in particular, right, in areas like Clarksburg where I live, there is a tendency to think of us as, you know, sort of a car-centric community that empties out every day because, you know, folks are either hitting 270, going down some of our state and county roads to be able to get to jobs that aren't here. And folks have proposed that the biggest solution to that is to get some anchor employers up here, right? But also, I think that we need to be just as focused on making sure that we're building a real transportation network that's multimodal here, right, that will allow us to have, you know, a strong transit network capacity for people who are going to be driving, you know, protected by planes, better pedestrian access, et cetera. And I think that's all got to be part of the framework.
So, you know, we obviously cannot make infinite investments in all of those things. And in the end, I think you're talking about a balance between, you know, say, incentives to companies to bring jobs and the investment, for example, in transit, as you just described.
Yeah.
Where is that balance? What can you do as a county council member to this? So you can appropriate more money in the education budget. You can support a tax abatement plan for a new employer coming to a particular part of the county. And you could say, you could increase the bonding level. And right now, you know, every year, we max out our bonding level. So it's not like, you know, we are leaving money at the table. So, you know, which specifically, where do you think? Would you support tax abatement? Would you give more money from the operating budget? Would you somehow move to increase your bonding level?
I think that the council, successive councils, right, have sort of banded together to invest in MCPS in the, you know, the ways in which, not just that MCPS is requested, but, you know, they've raised the bar on maintenance of effort every year, right? And our school system, you know, continues to grow and continues to grow in need. I think that that's something-
Well, continues to grow is different from continues to grow in need because enrollments are down.
Well, so fair. Enrollments are down right now. I think we see, and enrollments in public education are a little down, you know, right across the border, across the country. A lot of that has to do with some COVID issues. But I think that given, I think that given the amount of people that we know are going to be coming into the county, right, over the next decade, let's say, also given the amount of, especially again, in my area of county, the amount of housing that's been approved, we know that people are going to come and continue to come. So the system's going to grow. Again, I don't think that the contraction will be long term. And as you said, continues to grow and continues to grow and need are two different things. But as our school system changes and grows, needs do grow, right? And so, you know, I'm going to be fully supportive of making sure that we're making those investments in MCPS.
You know, the county council, county government has given MCPS more than required by maintenance of effort. Would you increase that further? And the question really, sort of, you should consider is, you know, the maintenance of effort law gives a per pupil number, right? It's not an aggregate, you know, countywide number, but a per pupil number, right? So if enrollment goes up, I would assume that, you know, that number will go up automatically and without any effort on your part. But I think the question is, would you increase the per pupil amount for the maintenance of, beyond the maintenance of effort? Where do you think the need is, and is that necessary?
There are other, you know, specific programs and resources that Up County kids have to go to other schools in the county to be able to access. And so, you know, but also on the, I mean, the, the big need up here is, is a facilities need. Um, so we know what's going on with, with Clarksville Elementary School, right, that was built for, um, you know, built for 300, that's going to be at 900, I think, next year, right? Um, Poolsville High School is thankfully getting, uh, and is now, you know, shovel on the ground for their, um, their renovation. And so we've got, um, a lot of facilities challenges up here, which aren't even on the, the CIP list yet. And so those are, those are some of the kind of things that you're going to need somebody fighting for. And, and making sure every year, right, when, uh, you know, the, the council goes around to the reconciliation list that you're being a voice there for, for communities up here.
Oh, that's, that's, that's exactly right. Up County has severe capital spending needs on, in schools. Right? And so that money also comes from bonding. Right? So we are bonded to the maximum. You, Up County needs these schools and they'll be paid for by future bonding. Up County also needs transit, which also need to be paid by bonding. And we are bounded out to the, we are, we are bonded up to the maximum. So tell me, what are you going to, how, how, what's your choice here?
So I mean, you know, one of the things that you, that you said, which I, I, I think everything has to be on the table, right? In, in addition to looking at how we increase the bonding authority, but also looking at, and the transportation side, while we still have time, um, looking at how we can, um, partner with our federal partners to go after some of the federal money from the Biden Infrastructure Plan. Um, whether it's on, whether it's on, um, you know, some of our, our county-specific, uh, transit projects or on some bigger, longer-term projects, right? Like in our communities especially, um, we see the need to have an investment in, um, all-day two-way mark service, which people say is a difficult sort of pipe dream because you have to work with CSX, they control the tracks. But because there's federal money out there, there are partners in the state, um, like, uh, Delegate Jared Solomon, who's been leading on this stuff, was a good friend of mine. Um, and the, the likely potential, hopefully for all of us, that we're going to have a pro-transit governor next time. Those are some of the things that we need to be moving the chairs around the table and getting done.
But Martin frequency is not part of any county, uh, application to the federal government on infrastructure. Or is it? Am I, maybe I'm wrong.
I, so, so as, as far as I understand, it's not, um, uh, in terms of like what's in the, what was in the, um, the earmark list essentially. Um, congressionally-directed program, uh, list we used to call it when I worked for, for Congressman Nebraska. Um, so it, it, it's not, right? And it needs to be a focus. Um, again, I think part of that is the notion that, at least.
But don't you think that train left the station is what I'm saying?
I see what you did there. Um, you know, no, I, I don't, right? Because this infrastructure money is going to be, you spend out for a long time. Um, and, um, on Mark in particular, I don't think the train has left the station because you have, um, you know, uh, partners over in Virginia, right, that are doing a lot of work to expand VRE. I think you've got, I think you have bipartisan, and I, I don't remember the exact breakdown of the, um, the bill that Jared Solomon and others, um, the package that Jared Solomon and others got through, um, the legislature this year, but I know that it was bipartisan, I believe. You have folks on both sides who understand, um, both the need to invest in heavy rail, um, like Mark, because it moves people, because it brings transit equity, but also because it brings the ability for economic development, right? And so, and we, and we know in Maryland that we're behind Virginia, um, on what they're doing in VRE, which is a whole nother story about how Virginia pays for transit, right?
How is Virginia different?
As I understand, Virginia has, um, uh, certain revenues that are directly dedicated for the transportation projects that we see over there, either the road projects or now the, the investments in VRE that they're making. And Maryland is sort of trying to square the circle because we don't have those same revenues coming in. And so we've got to figure out, um, both from what we could generate ourselves, but also what we can leverage, um, at the federal side for regional investment, how we can catch up. And so I think, um, to your point about the train, uh, train having left the station, I don't think it's left yet. Um, because, um, I think there's still regional interest in getting, right? The, the federal dollars that I'm talking about that we could help to leverage to invest in mark service would benefit us, but would also benefit, um, our neighbors if we can do what we need to do to have the regional transportation network that folks are envisioning, you know, with the eventual connectivity perhaps even, um, right? Between, um, between VRE and Mark. And again, uh, that would help to grow and attract jobs, not just in Virginia, um, but to our side. Um, you know, I, I think that ultimately we see, um, going back to sort of the, the traffic analogy we're talking about with Clarksville and the Up County of folks sort of draining out, um, every morning to go to jobs down county. They're also, right, going through to go to jobs on the Virginia side. And we need to be growing our economy in such a way that there's people coming from Virginia to come to jobs in Montgomery County.
Let me ask you another transportation question since we are on that subject, uh, BRT, right? Bus Rapid Transport.
Yeah.
Um, do you believe it works?
I do.
And, and especially because I want to say that in our, in the experience of the county, they have dedicated lanes. BRT has dedicated lanes where no dedicated lanes are necessary because traffic is low. And no dedicated lanes where dedicated lanes are actually necessary, which is in Down County.
Well, so, um, here's what I'll say. Uh, we can get into the, the dedicated lanes where and why thing. Um, so I definitely support bus rapid transit. I think, and I support the bus rapid transit network. I think that's important, that bus rapid transit, as it was envisioned in Montgomery County, wasn't just one line on Route 29 or one line on 355, right? It was an interconnected network of, uh, BRT buses that would help get.
But if it's just network, why not just invest in ride-on? I mean, the only distinguishing-ish thing between BRT and ride-on is that they have, or they were promised dedicated lanes and which didn't happen. And I don't think will happen.
So I, I think the dedicated lanes can, should and will happen. Um, I think it's, I think it's going to take the, I think it's going to take the stakeholders, you know, involved, DOT planning, the, and the political, um, stakeholders.
Building dedicated lanes down county where they are actually necessary is, seems like a huge, huge political lift that, you know, and, and especially one because, because Down County has opposed, uh, 495. Um, and, you know, in, in, in sort of mid-county 270.
So I, I agree with you that finishing the BRT network is going to take a big political lift because it will mean dedicated lands in some people, in some places where some people might not want them, right? It does not mean, in order to have a functional bus rapid transit network, it does not mean that the entire, right? The entire length has to be in dedicated lands. It needs to be dedicated where necessary to get through dense traffic.
You're right. It doesn't, everything doesn't have to be dedicated lens, but they can only get dedicated lanes in Burtonsville where they don't need it. But in Silver Spring where they need it, they can't get it.
Well, so I, I, I think that especially for the Up County, right, in the area where we're looking at along 355, having a BRT network will benefit our community, right, going through, um, the, those communities in Germantown that are disproportionately, you know, folks who have one car, no car, right? Folks who are dependent on transit.
I agree with you. Why not add more ride-on buses?
Uh, I've been saying for a long time, we've got to evaluate our ride-on network. We haven't, in a while, taken, taken a look holistically at sort of how our ride-on resources are deployed in terms of where stops are, right? We need to make sure that ride-on, right, right, ride-on is the lowest hanging fruit. I agree with you there. And we need to make sure that ride-on is as targeted and as deep in communities as possible to be able to get people moving, right? We gotta also look at our existing routes and how to tweak those. For instance, there's one ride-on route that goes all the way up to Poolsville, right? A bus that runs about every hour. If you miss it, you miss it. And you can't get down to work. You have seniors who can't get to medical care. So those are things we can be doing, but at the same time, right? We need to, we have to have, I think, that, that BRT network.
Okay. Let's talk about the third thing you talked about, which is housing. What do you think is the problem with housing in Montgomery County?
The baseline issue is that we don't have enough affordable housing. We don't have enough housing. That's actually the baseline issue. And we don't have enough housing that is affordable to people. Um, and what I mean by affordable housing is that I mean that for, um, you know, folks who are, you know, sort of, um, deeply below the area median income to be able to afford to live here, either in their first, their first home, their first, you know, et cetera. But also for, um, the affordability crunched as it's being caused on, um, middle-income families, right? And so it's, we have a housing affordability crisis that goes up and down the economic ladder. At the same time, um, uh, you know, we need to be doing a good deal more to be able to help people who are interested in purchasing homes, right? And can't afford it because we know about, um, what's going on with housing prices. But at the same time, you know, folks who want to be able to get into rental housing. And I, you know, I, I chair an organization, um, called the Montgomery County Renters Alliance and do a lot of, we do a lot of tenant outreach, um, organizing advocacy. We were at the Affordable Housing Conference last week, um, talking about the eviction crisis coming and some of the things that we need to be partnering across the sector. Um, you know, advocates, developers, stakeholders, et cetera, to make sure we're providing more affordable, affordable housing and affordable rental housing.
Why do you think we have an affordable housing problem?
Uh, so, you know, some of it is, is, uh, supply and demand, right? That, um, because, uh, we need to be producing way more units of housing, um, than we are. Um, you know, prices are up, but also we know that housing prices are up across the country. We know that nationally we're in a, a crunch. Um, you know, we know that, that because, well, through COVID, there've been, you know, supply chain issues and, and, uh, price, um, jumps on raw materials in terms of building. Um, but we also know that we need the right policies in place, uh, to be able to incentivize, um, the development of affordable housing. And so some of that, so you know, the county has a MPDU program, the moderately priced dwelling unit program for rental housing that, um, you know, provide, that, that ensures that, um, in new developments, um, that there are lots of caveats to it, of course, um, unfortunately. But in, in new developments, that there's a floor of affordable, affordable housing provided with the market rate. So we need to.
Do you think the MPDU program in the county works? There are seven, six thousand, seven hundred, almost seven thousand, maybe some, some in that region, uh, MPDU units in the county.
Right.
Right? And, and actually we have lost a bunch of MPDU units. So to my mind, the MPDU, uh, program is not such a successful program. I mean, it's not providing anywhere close to the numbers that you need. So what is the problem?
Yeah. Listen, so I agree, I agree. I, I think there, there are some people who think that the MPDU program needs to be our only affordable housing policy and program. That alone is not going to help us solve the, the crisis. For one, we need, um, a higher level requirement for MPDUs.
If you have a higher requirement on MPDUs, right? And people, and, um, developers are not building more homes anyway. Do you think that's an incentive for them to build more homes?
Yeah, we, we need more housing built. Um, but the, the challenge is what type of housing, right? Like, we need, um, you know, more family housing built. We need more housing types built. Um, so that we, you know, I, I, and again, you know, into the.
So the market is not functioning as you want it to function.
The market, the market alone is not going to function in a way that we need to, to provide the housing that we need. Yeah. And so that's why government has to, has to, uh, has to act, right? And so, uh, so I think we, uh, again, on, on our requirement side, I think we need to do what we can to, to work to, um, to modernize our, our MPDU requirements, but also.
But what does modernize mean?
I think we need to require, we need to require more affordable units in developments though.
The problem with that is, yeah, but the problem with requiring a higher percentage of units be MPDU is that if you have a supply problem and, and developers are not building enough housing stock itself, and you say, I will impose another requirement on them that you will have provide, you know, higher percentage of what you build as MPDUs, then do you think that's an incentive to add to housing stock?
I think there are other incentives that we can provide.
So what are those?
We need, we need to, but I, I think we, we can't be captive to the fact that the, the market itself does not want to build affordable housing, right? Like, I think.
Sure. I agree with that. So tell me what the government, public policy-wise, what can we do?
So I mean, I, I think, uh, one of the other things beside development, and I'm happy to, uh, because we need to be building, but to your point about what we're losing, we also have to be focused on preserving affordable housing that we have, right? We have to be focused on how we can keep people who are in, um, you know, uh, how, how, how we can keep people in their homes, um, keep people stabilized in their homes, right? And we need to be prioritizing as we're talking about how we build more different housing types, because that will help us get, excuse me, to different levels of affordability, along with some of the other things that are already on the table. Um, but we, we can't ignore, we, we're not going to be able to build ourselves out of the affordable housing crisis, period, right? Like, even though I do believe we need more units of housing to keep up with the projections that the council of governments and others are saying that, that's coming here, we have to make sure that we're talking about, um, you know, preservation as well.
There are two parts to preservation, right? One is what you can extract as MPDUs from new development, right? And that is twelve and a half percent, you know, and then, and, and, you know, if you, if you, uh, increase that, it's probably likely to affect how much housing is actually built because, you know, that's another requirement. But there is also, and, and the problem with the MPDU program is that there is a sunset clause to it, right? That over a period of time, an MPDU will transition out of the MPDU program into the general, um, housing stock. There's a legislative fix to this. There is also the naturally occurring affordable housing concept, right? Which is, you know, at any point in history, housing, more, a lot of the housing that is built is built at the higher end. And then over a period of time, it, the housing, uh, quality degrades. And that you get naturally affordable housing that way. That's, so when you say preservation, which one are you talking about?
So I, I, and I, uh, I, I take your, uh, you know, so your, your example, but, um, I think that we've got to, we've got to, we've got to change the, or get out of the paradigm that, you know, um, affordable housing is sort of what's left over, right? Like, um, I think, to, to your point on the MPDU program specifically, when I say modernized, that's what I'm talking about, both upping the 12%, figuring out how to, how to extend that sunset to make sure. And, and I'm not, I know it's not a magic wand. I know that developers aren't going to be super excited to have a, a higher MPDU threshold. I think we've got to be.
The question is more than the developers. Do you have a political coalition to bring that about?
I think we got to build it. That's what we were talking about at the Affordable Housing Conference, right? Like, I, I was coming from the perspective of somebody who is a, a tenant and renter advocate, talking to, um, you know, folks who are in the development space and other spaces, you know, people who build and finance affordable housing about how we bring this table together because for a long.
What rate of MPDU do you think you can have and get, and, and be, and be acceptable by developers?
I mean, you know, I, I, I cannot tell you. I, I know that 12% is not enough. I can tell you that.
How much would be enough from your perspective?
I think that we got to look at a number of factors to, I think it's sort of arbitrary to say, well, 20% is enough, 15% is enough, right? I think that, I, I think that's got to be a conversation with more than just me at the table, more than just me as a political actor, right? And so I think part of what we're, part of what is, what we're challenged with is not having the ability to have those conversations among all the actors that need to be involved. And again.
Why are we not having this conversation? That's the, I mean, there's a, that's a political.
Oh, it's political. Yeah. It's a political conversation, right? And again, that's part of the conversation that we were having at the Affordable Housing Conference, which is why, you know, fantastic that, that exists to be able to bring, um, folks together. I, I, I think that, unfortunately, like many, you know, political issues, this has been, um, sort of weaponized. And we're having the conversation at the polls, right? I think also it is difficult, given that, um, you know, you have political actors who don't believe we need to be building as much housing as we do, right? And so we gotta, we gotta have people who are operating at least from the same set of facts.
Okay. So tell me, how do you get more supply? Tell me specifically, how do you get more supply under those conditions?
Under the, the tough political conditions?
Yeah, under the tough political, um, you know, um, supply chain, um, developers, they, you know, you know, there are some pretty naughty problems here.
There, I, there are, there are. It's not going to be, it's not going to be easy to figure out. And I know it's not, it's not just as you're saying.
What do you think we should do?
We, I, I think that we have to. We, I, I think that we have to, I think that we've got to figure out a way to find to bring back, uh, what we were using earlier in the conversation, the balance, right? Um, you know, developers are gonna need to make a profit on the things that they're building, but we have a need here to make sure that we've got affordability up the chain for folks who live here. And so we're gonna have to figure out different configurations of what that looks like, where it can work for them, and it can work for our needs.
You know what I'm really surprised by? Because your answer has not included yet, social housing. It has not included actual government investment in, in creating housing stock.
We hadn't gotten to it yet, because we got, we got caught up on, on the first issue on MPDUs. I, I think, I mean, so you do see the county um, uh, doing some, some deals on affordable housing directly, right? Like, working with um, nonprofits, with religious groups, et cetera, um, who are able to work with them to strike a deal to, to create affordable housing in the county directly, invest in, right? We've got um, you know, the ability to do that on county-owned property and the ability to make uh, partnerships with some of those folks. DC is outpacing us, and we've got more people in more need. Um, you know, for investment in, like, direct investment in um, attracting and building affordable housing. Um, so I, I think that's one of the, it's not a low hanging, because again, that's politically fraught. I mean, everything is politically fraught. That's politics, right? But, um, and why people hate it, to your point, but, um, but uh, that, that, that's something that, that we absolutely need to be doing. And so, yeah.
Will Roberts, thank you for coming on I Had Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thanks so much.
That was Will Roberts from Montgomery County Council District Two. You can find out more about him at WilliamJRoberts.org. And you can follow him on Twitter at William J Rob. Up next, Al Carr, who used to be the delegate from District Nineteen, and now is running for County Council District Four. Al Carr, welcome to I Had Politics.
Thank you so much for having me. It's good to be here.
You had sent me an op-ed that you wrote in Bethesda Beat about transparency and ethics rules in the county. Can you explain how those rules in the county are different from the rules at the state level, which is an argument you made?
Sure. I've been a state delegate for about fifteen years. And during my time in office, there's been a remarkable transformation at the state level in terms of transparency. At the General Assembly, we stream all of our meetings. Um, we make our votes public. We've, we've made it easy for the public to participate in the legislative process. And then we have enacted a number of laws that require state agencies to also be transparent, to, to stream their meetings, to publish written minutes, and uh, so on. Uh, the, the Montgomery County could do more to be more like the state. Uh, the county has many, many boards, commissions, and committees, and they could take the same steps that the state has taken. They could publish their meeting agendas in advance. They could stream their meetings on YouTube, so that people could watch either live or after the fact. Um, so those are some simple, you know, inexpensive steps that the county could take. When it comes to ethics, the state law says that local governments, like counties and municipalities, are required to have ethics laws locally that are similar to the state ethics laws. So that refers to financial disclosure, conflict of interest, and lobbying. Uh, when it comes to lobbying especially, different counties have implemented that differently. You have some counties that have very strong local lobbying laws, Prince George's County, Howard County, Frederick County, Baltimore County, but Montgomery County, we have this image of being squeaky clean and having the best ethics and the best, best laws, but on this particular matter, we, we don't. We're not as strong as the surrounding counties. And so what I mean by that is there are a lot of activities that you and I, in uh, layman's term, would consider lobbying somebody spending money to influence government policy decisions, government officials, that don't have to be disclosed, so that I would liken that to dark money, where you have money being spent and it doesn't get disclosed anywhere. That's dark money.
You say that Montgomery County has weak um, laws, right? In the respect of transparency and ethics. So where is, what is the difference?
So one difference is in procurement. At the state level, if you are a someone seeking to influence a procurement, the state wants to spend a hundred thousand dollars on something, or a million dollars on something, and you want to speak to government officials to, to convince them that your company is better than the other companies, then you have to disclose that.
Do you see that as a real problem in Montgomery County? Do you have an example of where
In Montgomery County, that doesn't have to be disclosed. Well, for example, uh, in Montgomery County, we have a housing agency called the Housing Opportunities Commission. And they're not part of the county government. They're an independent agency, but for, for ethics purposes, they do fall under the county ethics laws. So this is an enormous agency. They are actually the largest landlord, the largest landowner, the largest developer in the county, but they're, they're a government agency. And they have a very, very large budget, uh, in the hundreds of millions of dollars. But there, uh, when someone wants to influence what they're spending, that, that doesn't get disclosed anywhere because of the weak Montgomery County lobbying law.
When you say weak, what do you mean by weak?
Uh, weak means there is no requirement in the law that if you are someone who is spending money or being paid to influence a procurement, uh, you, that is not defined as a lobbyist in the Montgomery County law. At the state level, that is defined as a lobbyist, and you're somebody who must disclose uh, your activities. How much are you being paid? What are, what are you?
Okay, so there are two parts to this. One is the gifting issue, right? One is you're, you know, paying for food, entertainment, gifts, right? That's an issue. And I think that's, you know, that's clearly um, uh, an issue. But the other issue here is that if you have somebody that is um, an employee of an organization, right? So say, uh, somebody that works for a church, right? And they are lobbying for better COVID food distribution.
Right.
Would that, would they be covered by this? By your, by your standard?
No, no. So what you typically do, you have, you know, carve-outs and exemptions. Like, you might have a, a dollar amount threshold, so that you're not bringing in, you know, parent, teacher organizations, PTAs, or, or churches. So the state, in the state law, there are appropriate carve-outs, so that you're not, you're, you know, you're capturing someone that you and I would, you know, you look at it and you say, this is a lobbyist. You, you're, you're not gonna say, this is a church.
But what is the difference between a lobbyist that works for um, a PTA uh, or a church, and um, somebody that works for, on behalf of homeless people, say?
Sometimes it's a dollar amount threshold, you know, if it's a, it's a big corporation, they're paying
So what is the dollar amount in the state law, and what is the dollar amount in county law?
Um, right. So in county law for procurement, there, there's, there's no dollar amount. There's no threshold. If you're, if you're influencing a, a procurement, county's spending a million dollars on something, there's no threshold. You don't have to lobby.
Let's set the procurement issue aside. Let's say just for advocacy purposes, right? So somebody like the executive director of Primary Care Coalition or nonprofit Montgomery, they are paid. And they lobby continuously with the county government. Would you want to cover these people?
So at the state level, if, if you are paid, or if you pay uh, above a certain threshold, you're a lobbyist.
What is that threshold?
Uh, so I'll look it up for you. I, I don't have it off the top of my head.
And I'm trying to separate two different things. I'm trying to separate the gifts issue, which has a threshold, which, which has a state threshold that you will tell me about. And then there is an issue about advocacy, advocacy being done by people that are paid to do it. For example, the executive director of the Primary Care Coalition. For example, the president of Mano Food, um, you know, which is the county's food bank. So, so they all do lobbying. They are paid to do lobbying.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So are you gonna cover um, Jackie DeCarlo?
So at the, at the state level, if you fit the definition, whether you're a nonprofit or a for-profit, if you are, if you are paying, or if you are paid to influence government procurement, government policy, then you're a lobbyist.
If you're going to include Mano Food, Nonprofit Montgomery, Renters Alliance, or Primary Care Coalition, that's a wholly different ballgame you're asking for.
So another issue is in enforcement. So in Montgomery County, we have an Ethics Commission. And enforcement is done very differently at the state level than it is at the county level.
What is the difference?
So for example, at the state level, if you are required to register as a lobbyist and disclose your activities, and you fail to do that, and the State Ethics Commission becomes aware of that, there, there are sanctions. You know, you'll get fined for that, because they take that very seriously. At the county level, there, they are, they have a policy of just requiring the person to retroactively register. Uh, so it's a very different approach at the state and the county level. Um, another uh, difference between state and county is um, complaints. Uh, so when a citizen thinks something is going wrong, you know, you have a um, high-level employee that is doing something that they don't think is right, um, and they go to the trouble just to do a little research, they stick their neck out, and they file a complaint. Um, they deserve to get, have their complaint investigated, and they deserve a response, you know? Mister, Mister Daskupta, we received your complaint. Um, we investigated it. We found it didn't hot, we did not have any merit. Or we investigated it, and we, we required the employee to up, update their incorrect financial disclosure form, whatever it is.
What office in Montgomery County is supposed to do that?
Um, so that is the Ethics Commission. And so what, the, the policy of the Ethics Commission is uh, to um, not respond to the complainant with the resolution of the complaint. Um, so it's sort of from the perspective of somebody complaining, it, it goes into a black hole. Uh, and the message to the public is, well, you know, don't, don't bother to stick your neck out and file a complaint, because you'll never find out what happened. Uh, and you won't know if the employee was held accountable, or asked to change their behavior, or what have you. This, um, at the state level, you know, complaints are, are handled more seriously.
Okay, so you're talking about an opportunity to cure is what you're talking about. Uh, and that's fairly common in law, um, across not just Maryland, um, and, and the county, but also across the, um, you know, across the country and even internationally. So there are laws that allow you opportunity to cure. I mean, IRS being the, you know, the Internal Revenue Code being the, be the great example of that. Um, so what is fundamentally wrong with an opportunity to cure?
Uh, so there's nothing wrong with an opportunity to cure, but, but there's a difference when you have the state who has one practice and the county that has a different, different practice. Um, then I think that makes you think, you know, should the county conform to what the state does? Should the county do their own thing?
Or should the state have an opportunity to cure? How about that?
Um, so I think at the, at the, I mean, the, the complaint process is set out in the law. Um, but I, you know, I think the state follows their complaint process and does respond to the complainant with a resolution, which, which the county doesn't always do.
Okay, I got that. That's, that seems like something that the Ethics Commission ought to do, right? So just let people know what came of their complaint. Um, you know, I, I, I get that. So let's put that aside. We have agreement. What I, what I'm, what I'm wondering is why you have a philosophical problem with an opportunity to cure?
Yes, I, I do not have a philosophical problem with an opportunity to cure.
But that's the difference you're pointing out between state and local law.
Is, um, you know, the county having a practice that differs from the state, um, that is more lenient than the state, and the message that it sends to citizens that, um, you know, don't bother filing a complaint, or um, if you're a lobbyist, you know, don't worry if you don't, if you didn't bother register, it's, it's not a problem. We don't take it seriously. We don't, uh, we don't enforce our laws, so, you know, our laws are not important.
But that's, I'm not sure that is the case. I mean, so, okay, first of all, you're asking Mano Food, Montgomery, um, nonprofit Montgomery, Renters Alliance, and Primary Care Coalition, executive directors to register as lobbyists. Okay, that's, that in itself is quite the, her, is, is quite the standard you're setting. Right? Then you're saying ordinary people that are um, advocating say they made a mistake, and they have, they get an opportunity to cure, and they say, no, they should not have an opportunity to cure. What is philosophically wrong with that? I don't understand that.
Well, suppose you were somebody who, by the state's definition, was required to file as a lobbyist and failed to do so. So what the state would, would, would have you cure it, they would have you register and cure that, and they might, and they might sanction you. They might have you pay a fine. They say, well, you know, for people who are required to file, and they don't, they don't do so, you know, there is a, there is a fine, and they might have to pay uh, an amount for, uh, for failing to file.
So I am concerned about me being able to do this as a PTA president, or when I was PTA president. So, you know, you, it, and I don't know much about ethics laws, or I don't know much about, um, you know, your transparency laws at the state level or whatever. You know, I want to go to my government and petition my government, which is sort of a basic thing that, you know, um, a citizen ought to be able to do. And I make a mistake, and yours, and I don't have an opportunity to cure that mistake. That's the issue here.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there's different ways to handle the complaint. You know, if you, as a citizen, become aware of somebody that's not complying with ethics law, you could, you could bring it to that person's attention directly.
So as a PTA president, I advocate, for example, for a new school. Right? Under your definition, uh, I have to register as a lobbyist.
Um, well, there's a, there's a dollar threshold, so I think
What is the dollar threshold?
Um, so let me tell you what the dollar threshold is at the state level. So, uh, at the state of Maryland, you are a lobbyist. If you communicate in the presence of an official or employee of the legislative branch, and you spend more than five hundred dollars, or you earn greater than or equal to twenty-five hundred dollars, or you communicate uh, with an official or employee of the executive branch, uh, and you earn more than uh, five thousand dollars, uh, or you spend greater or equal to two thousand dollars, including uh, salaries, uh, et cetera, to influence legislative action, um, et cetera.
Thank you. Um, by that definition, I would say the president of Mano Food. Right? The uh, executive director of Primary Care Coalition fall in that category. Are you asking them to register as lobbyists?
Uh, well, I think the county should set a, a threshold, which is appropriate for the county. And organizations that are above, above, above the threshold would, uh,
What should be the threshold, in your view?
So I'm not proposing a specific threshold amount.
Well, why not? So you're trying to get into the county government now. So assume, I assume that you want to make these changes.
Yeah.
So what is your proposal about these changes?
So I, I don't have a specific dollar amount in mind.
Okay. In your article, you mentioned Kensington, Laurel, Bowie, and Greenbelt do it better than Rockville, Gatorsburg, and Tacoma Park?
Sure. And what I was referring to is the, the lobbying provisions within a local ethics ordinance. Any um, company or individual that is, that is being paid or is paying to influence a government action. There are not a lot of carve-outs where, um, in other jurisdictions, you're only a lobbyist if you're somebody who, you know, buys a meal, buys a gift, or takes someone to a concert. And that's not a, um, I think a common sense and reasonable definition of what is a lobbyist.
That is interesting. So Kensington doesn't have a gift um, threshold. It has It has a, anybody that is paid by anybody to influence a government decision needs to register, correct? Is that, is that your understanding?
Basically very broad. They don't have a carve-out that say, that says you're only a lobbyist if you, if you buy, buy gifts, meals, and entertainment. Um, but a lot of other jurisdictions do have that, that carve-out.
Okay, I get the abstract argument. What specifically do you see as a negative consequence of these process failures?
Yeah, um, I, I think we, we get, we, we fail always to get as, as good of a buy-in that we could have. One example is in a development called Chevy Chase Lake. So this is a large development, it's on Connecticut Avenue. It's, um, just south of the Beltway, about a mile. Um, so, you know, there was a sector plan that was developed called the Chevy Chase Lake Sector Plan, um, that involved the planning board, it involved the county council, it involved a lot of citizen input. It says in there that when a developer comes in and develops, they should place the wires, the utilities underground. What happened was when the developer came in for approval, uh, for those buildings, they got a waiver that was done quietly. It was done without the knowledge of, uh, citizens who live nearby. We don't know when that discussion happened, we don't know where it happened, the minutes were not published. If you're talking about the Development Review Committee, when some of those, these things are supposed to be discussed.
Is it normal practice for the Development Review Committee to release minutes?
They are, as a public body, they're, they are required to publish minutes, and they, they were not doing that.
Now, you've been in politics for at least 15 years, right?
Yeah.
Probably more. You know that wealthy citizens stop projects from happening in their neighborhoods, using process as a way to prevent forward movement. Do you not, have you never seen that?
Yes, I think any project that is, you know, in the billions of dollars, you know, anywhere in the U S is gonna be scrutinized, and it is not uncommon for that project to be challenged on, you know, uh, all different sorts of grounds.
You are, uh, leaving a state position where you could force counties and local jurisdictions with bills like fifty-nine and ten fifty-nine to, um, you know, follow the laws as you see them, right? And you're leaving that position in order to seek a position on the county council where you will be one of eleven, and where, by the way, and a number of them who have already been in the, in the county council, on the county council for several years, may disagree with you over your, um, positions about transparency, about, um, and, and ethic, ethics matters. How do you think you're improving your ability to influence or make, bring about those changes that you want?
Sure, so yes, as a state delegate for 15 years, one of the things I have focused on is, uh, open government. Uh, I've introduced and, um, gotten passed a number of bills, you know, improving government transparency, whether it's the Open Meetings Act, the Public Information Act. Um, and I've also proposed several improvements to the ethics laws. So I'm very proud of my work. Uh, this year in 2022, I, I was able to get House Bill ten fifty-nine passed, and that is a bill that had to do with our by-county agencies like Park and Planning, the parent agency of the planning board, W S S C, our water and sewer, uh, utility. That bill was absolutely needed. And then the other bill, House Bill fifty-nine, that bill passed the House of Delegates unanimously, but it did not advance in, uh, the Senate. So I am running for the county council. I got my start in local government. Exactly 20 years ago, I was elected to the Kensington Town Council. I served there for three terms and very proud of my record there, working on economic development and progressive taxation and pedestrian safety. Uh, and so I've always loved local government from my municipal days. If you look back at my record of all the bills I've introduced and championed over the years, many of them had a local component to them, so I've never forgotten, I've always been thinking about the function of local government. I, I came close to running four years ago, there was an opening when Roger Berliner, um, left to, because he was termed out, he ran for county executive. That was not the right time for me. But, uh, this time around, I was drawn into this new district, County Council District Four, which has a big overlap with my legislative district, where people have seen me on the ballot four times. So it was very tempting for me to want to run, um, and, you know, with my interest in local government, um, in, on land use, on, um, development, on pedestrian safety, on transportation, you know, many, many of the things that I'm interested in are, are county matters. So that's why I'm running for, for a county government. Um, the ethics in open government is just, you know, just one of the topics I've worked on. If I'm elected to the county council, I will hope to continue that work. I do have some specific ideas of how the county's ethics law could be improved. And, uh, I will be, um, attempting to persuade my county col, county council colleagues, if I'm elected, of, uh, the wisdom of, uh, these improvements.
Al Carr, thank you for coming on I Hit Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thanks for having me.
That was Al Carr for Montgomery County Council District Four. You can find out more about him at alcarr.org, and you can follow him on Twitter at Alfred Carr, C A R R. That's all for this episode. Music for this episode comes from DC-based singer-songwriter Emily Hall. I hope you listen, like, and share the show as we bring you stories about politics close to you and to your home. See you next time.